Welcome, everybody, to our January 4th Fairhope Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our December 4th meeting. Anybody have any corrections or changes that need to be made on those minutes? If not, I will accept a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve as is. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, we'll put Clarice down for the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, motion passing unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we have one piece of old business. Myrick Place has requested an extension of one year for their application. Traditionally, the first request we carte blanche have always traditionally approved. Does anybody have an issue with approving the request to extend Myrick Place for one year? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the extension of Myrick Place for one year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, agenda items. A, I had a big argument with Hunter saying that there's no way. It's been a year since we went over our stormwater management program plan, but he did say we have a new video to watch this time after watching the old one for about three or four years straight, so that's exciting.
That's right. And thank you, Lee. And I'm just here to make an introduction and want to take that opportunity to once again say thank you to one of our recent retirees after 26 years with the city, Kim Burmeister, has moved on to better things, and we really appreciate what she did. Managing the MS4 program is not an easy task. It's a lot of herding of cats. It's telling people things they don't want to hear, but it keeps the city straight, and we're going to miss that. But Nicole Love is with us. She's going to give us an update this year, in January. Nicole is relatively new with the city, but she has over 20 years of experience in the environmental field, interfacing with local, state, and federal governments, nonprofit organizations, and regional planning commission boards handling stakeholder engagement, public outreach, public speaking training, and meeting facilitations. So, we're really lucky to have Nicole. Really appreciate her time being here and welcome her to the circus. But without any other forewarning, I'm going to let Nicole get up here and give us our annual update for the MS4 and some of the updates we've done this year.
Yep. Hello. Good evening, everyone. Alright, so you've been through this before, so I'm not going to go through everything with the background information, but you know, we operate under the MS4 general permit. As part of this permit, we have to, we were required to develop the stormwater management plan, and then we're required to submit it year, to review it, and then submit it yearly back to ADAM. And one of the requirements on there is assessment and public review of the SWMP has to be done. And under our current SWMP 2023, the planning commission was the designated body for this, so you guys get the pleasure of reviewing everything. So, if you want to go onto the website, I'll have links later to review the entire SWMP, you are welcome to do that. It's 105 pages. But I know what Kim used to do is just provide you all with the changes for this year. So, a couple of things, starting off, you know, we've updated the contact person information since our lovely Kim Burmeister is no longer here, and we've updated the land use map, which is something we do every year as well. We've also updated the outfall map and the inventory spreadsheet that goes along with that. So, you know, the spreadsheet that tells whether the outfalls are good, bad, or indifferent. We did add some planned stormwater initiatives for 2024, and a couple right off the top of my head that I'm thinking of are, we added in the sewer project that we are currently doing. We think that that's a good representation of how we're trying to protect our water quality. As well, we added the Osprey Initiative litter traps that we have the grant funding, the Gomez grant funding for. We're going to have, put 12 of those out into our stormwater drains, so that also is, you know, really good for our stormwater management plan. And then, a couple of other ones, like the Eagle reefs, we put those on there because those are also going to have an educational component to it with signage, so we kind of put that. We put some others, but those are kind of the big ones that I can think of. And then, we revised the measurable goals to include QCI, which is the qualified certification, I don't know. QCI, I have it right here, but it's not coming to my mind. Anyway, certification for our inspectors. New building inspectors will get the QCI certification, as well as new right-of-way inspectors. That was not previous, that was not in the previous SWMP.
And Nicole, I'm going to let you know-
Any questions on any of those?
I've got the, I've got those scheduled for February, or excuse me, January and February for four of our folks. So, they're scheduled.
Awesome. Any questions on those changes yet? Just stop, give me a minute, okay. We obviously have to update our city management flowchart, our, the number of outfalls that we have, our watershed. We always provide an updated watershed map that includes our updated MS4 area within the corporate limits, and that did increase our watershed acreage from 9,837 to 9,995 acres. And then, the big part of this is, is public engagement and public involvement. So, a couple of things that we added this year that we, even though we may have been doing it in the past, I know Kim identified these partners, specifically the CAST, and, you know, we work with the Fairhope High School Marine Life Environmental Club, and then the Weeks Bay National Estuarum Research Reserve and Mobile Bay NEP. So, those are just partners that we have that we just, we know that we interact with them a lot on these issues, so we added them. Again, we added the Eagle Reef, Eagle reefs as a demonstration project. And then, one thing that we removed was a previous stormwater management brochure, which was pretty outdated, and it's, the information's covered in other brochures, so we just took that off. And then, we also added that two watershed management plans have been completed. The Eastern Shore and the Weeks Bay watershed management plans are done, and there are a lot of good things in there, and those, a lot of good recommendations in those that will, will help us also move forward. And then, the employee certifications, again, we're going back to that a little bit in that, because Hunter has changed some things around a little bit, we're going to have one Planning and Zoning Code Enforcement Officer instead of two, and then, three right-of-way inspectors instead of one. That's correct, right?
And we will be adding an additional planning detective will also be certified.
Yeah.
So, that's been posted recently.
Any questions on any of those? Anyone? No?
You know, I have a bunch of questions, and I'll wait, I'll let you get through everything.
And then, as part of the illicit discharge detection and elimination, ID, the E measurable goal, we did the updated outfall assessment schedule for 2024 to 2028. Just as a reminder, we do 15% outfall inspections every year, so 15% of our outfalls have to be inspected every year, and then, within the five years, we have to have 100% completion. So, we just put the new schedule, the new schedule for 2024 will include Rock Creek and Turkey Branch, so that'll be about 111 outfalls to be assessed. And then, we did add in a BMP for Alabama Water Watch Initiative, which, this is something that we used to do, and then, we kind of put a little bit of a pause on it because we were short on supplies for water quality testing, and we also needed-
I gotta throw a caveat in there.
Okay.
We didn't stop. They stopped certifying, so we couldn't get a trainer.
Okay. I did not know that part.
There was some, we didn't voluntarily stop the program.
But, we're certified now. So, Christina Lejeune, the Code Enforcement Officer, she has been recertified, and then, I also got certified. So, our plan is to resume that sampling and specifically Fly Creek area. So, again, we've just revised the number of inspectors. On the post-construction, we did update the HOA Stormwater Guide that we send out yearly to include information about inspecting your air raiders. That was one thing that seemed to be missing, and we have a lot of those in our stormwater ponds, so, stormwater retention ponds. And then, good housekeeping is just our internal stuff, so that's for us to make sure that we're doing everything that we can internally. And a couple of things that needed to be updated on that is, obviously, the pier marina is now just day use, not overnight, so there's no sewer pump out available there. And then, with the Fairhope City docks, they did update their spill prevention, control, and countermeasures plan in 2023, so that will also be included. And then, lastly, we put in there that we have, that the Hortical, our Hortical Trust and Parks and Rec Manager have been recertified for pesticide usage. And that's it. And we have two, so, just to let you know, both of these are on the website. The current plan is on the website, and then, the draft plan is also on the website for public review. And they are under the Planning Department Publications and Documents, I think is what it's called, or something like that. So, before we get to, I'll show you the video. Any questions? Do you want to ask before?
I think so. I mean, I-
Okay. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Yeah. I, again, I wish Kim was here so we could wish her, she's done great work over the years, and that's, we're excited for you to step into her shoes, put their big shoes to feel. I do, I think, I know this is kind of a routine thing, but I think we're a coastal community, we're a waterfront community, and the water quality is one of the most important things we deal with in terms of environmental quality and quality of life. So, and there's so much the city is doing when you go through this, but there were a few, a few things that popped up to me where either I had some questions or wanted to see if we could get more information in future years with this report, and maybe just opportunities for us to close some loops, loopholes, or gaps. So, one of those, just the, just the wanting to know more with the illicit discharges and with the, how many times with the stormwater enforcement during construction? It, I think the public would be interested to know, especially if there were no illicit discharges over the years, you know, we monitored 15%, and we found nothing, or we monitored 15%, and there were three issues, and we've dealt with them. That kind of summary would be really helpful.
So, and that's for the outfalls, so you were talking about the outfall inspections, again-
I was lumping both of those in.
Yeah, because they're, they're kind of separate, right?
They are, yes.
We kind of, yeah.
They are.
I was not trying to conflate them, just the desire for the executive summary with both of those.
So, there is a reporting requirement through ADAM of the way it's reported in the SWMP, and there's a bunch of pages there that are just a bunch of line items. We are talking about them instead to have an online map that you can just see, how it seems a lot more informational for people-
Yeah.
-than a bunch of just addresses on permits we reviewed during the year, some issues, some not. So, we are, we're having this conversation, but sometimes, coming up with a new idea can be a little bit hard to get through.
Yeah, well, and even just as, as it's presented to us, so there's like 10 pages of the addresses, if something bad was found at one, it's highlighted in red, or some, something to, if nothing else, the fact that nothing was found, like, let's celebrate that. But, you know, and that, I know they are two separate things, but I kind of thought the same thing at least once a year, kind of looking back, since we look at people's, you know, we're approving subdivisions, and we're, and we're looking at stormwater pollution prevention plans, kind of, it would be, it'd be interesting to know, for the course of this year, we had to issue 50 or none stop work orders or fines for construction, you know, stormwater pollution prevention during construction, just to have a sense of how well is this going? Is it, are people doing what they say they're going to do? And then, so those were the two, those were two kind of regulatory things. The other ones were just, the other thoughts were more kind of opportunities, the, the public education, there's so much the city has done, and there's all these great resources, like the Greener by the Yard document that was recently updated, has great information on how to reduce the stormwater impacts of your landscaping. So, a challenge for us and, and the Planning Department is, how can we get that information? If that's something that the city's encouraging, and it, it improves our water quality, how could we start to pull that into our subdivision regs? Or as an incentive, or just start to merge that in with how we deal with landscape in our subdivision regs? I think that there's an opportunity. I promise I'm not going to talk all night, but that stood out. And then, the, you know, the, the stormwater medallions was listed as an education, and that's, and it's great. I don't know if it's still happening.
Not that I know of. I think that was a one-time event of, I don't even know how many they ended up putting out, because I wasn't here then, but I was part of the FEAB at that time, and I just remember, I think it was a one-time deal.
Okay. But then downtown, there's these cool cast iron, you know, this flows to the bay at our inlets, but I don't know that they're consistently used, you know, that may just be a downtown amenity.
I think they're on most of the main hall, of course, we're, they're not the customized, not all of them are the customized Fairhope, but all of them say this flows to the bay.
This flows to the bay. I was just looking at, that seems like a positive reinforcement kind of thing that I don't, I have, today, looking at some of our subdivisions, I didn't see them there, and I was wondering how, if we, I think it's a good thing if we could keep doing it or solidify it. And then, the demonstration projects, you know, we do have the demonstration of pervious pavement in a few areas around town that wasn't listed. The wetland treatment is always listed, and that's a great one. I was thinking as a goal, and again, this is going on, but as a goal for the city, it would be great if we had demonstration projects for every LID measure that we encourage the use of, and start to look for opportunities either with Flying Creek, or the K-1, or just existing city facilities, so that we're encouraging people to do it, and we do it too, and we can point to a good example of what it looks like. And along with that, the, the two comments that are more specifically Planning Commission, since, and this is, anyway, since we changed the regs to not require the 10 LID measures, but it's a performance requirement, instead, you use LID measures to achieve this performance. When things come to us, we're not really seeing highlighted, people are no longer highlighting what LID measures they're using, they're just highlighting the performance achievement. And I feel like we are getting away from that encouragement of the individual distributed LID measures, and would like to start getting back to that, to, you know, where, what have you done other than just reducing, you know, just reemphasizing what's actually in the letter of the regs? Where are they, highlight them, show us?
I think that those are in the reports, you know, I just, as far as what the staff gets, you know, whether we want to go into everyone individually here, you know, the-
Well, it used to be, it used to be highlighted a lot more clearly, you know, instead of just the calculations.
Well, and that, I think that was based on, you know, when you had to provide 10, it was a-
You had to list the 10.
You had to show a diagram where you're providing the 10, so it is more performance, and it is in the narrative of how they're meeting the performance issues, and probably written in that long drainage narrative, there's somewhere where it says what type, but, but you're right, we don't get the schematic type.
And I, I'm not trying to give us more work, but I think the unintended consequences of that is if you, you lose the benefit of having more distributed measures that might actually reduce quantity to, if you're just saying, you know, we got it in one spot, and here's what we did to improve the quality. And that may just be, if we could emphasize the LID is the intent, you know, that might, that might help. And then, another, our stormwater pollution ordinance was called out in, in this, you know, in, in your summary, and it struck me, you know, it's something that we all follow and are familiar with, but, but reading it again and seeing that there's a requirement to not clear land more than 50 feet out from a commercial building, 30 feet out from a residential, it's like, hmm, how many, do we see that in the field? And I realize there's other reasons to clear, there's grading, and there's, but, you know, I mean, just looking at what's in our packet today, you don't see that. And so, if that's really something we want, we might need to emphasize it more, if it's really something that's in our regs, if there's an obstacle to achieving it, you know, that-
Yeah. Well, I know when we rewrote the ordinance a while back, we put, well, that's probably four years ago, we put some of those triggers in there, but also, a lot of that is site-specific. You can say you can't clear 50 feet, but if you're working on a 75-foot lot, you're building a 25-foot house.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of things that get into that, so there's-
They may all overlap.
It does, and when you've got someone that's building, or a builder that's building five or six houses in a row, if they get their Class A fencing in, they get their construction entrances in, those are the measures that need to be taken to try to control erosion on the site. But just basic construction methods, you can't get equipment around that house, you can't get materials around that house. So, that's why we make a lot of those. We make some of those judgment calls in the field.
Yeah.
The number one thing we're looking at is to make sure silt fencing is in, your construction entrance is in, your, your solid BMPs.
Yeah.
Then, if we have a problem, we have gone in and made them seed-in mulch areas that are exposed, that are on high slopes. We, we have that latitude in the field to do that. But it's really kind of a case, it's a site-by-site, it's hard to do a general reg like that, and when you're dealing with different topography and different sizes and shapes of lots.
Well, I mean, it's funny, because that's one of the things that is the most different about the projects we work on that are LEED certified, is that basic thing that there's a limit of disturbance, and it gets enforced, because that's not standard. But it's a good, it's a good thing to strive for when it's possible, because it's a low-cost measure, possibly. I, the question I really have for you is, if you're submitting in the county, even residentially, you have to provide your stormwater plan and show where those things are going to be installed? I don't, we don't do that in the city, do we?
Yes.
Well, for an individual house lot?
Yes.
We don't require a BMP plan-
Yeah, not commercial.
-for a, for a residential house lot. Anything commercial, multifamily, we have to have an engineered BMP plan. The engineered BMP plan will come when the subdivision is built as part of the overall construction, but when builder XYZ is building lots one through five, and they get land disturbance permits for those five, no, we do not require a specific BMP plan. We require that their BMPs be in place, and that they be inspected before we turn them loose for construction or inspections.
Yes.
But-
But not a, so that was, with the, with the county, it's not, it's not an engineered plan like with ADAM, but with the county, you have to do that, like, I've done-
We do on, on new construction, we have the ESC reviews?
We have an ESC review, but if you go through and look at the doc, but you generally, most rarely, you will have an actual-
Not a physical plan.
...plan or a drawing that shows where the BMPs are going on Lot 275 in Old Battlesville.
There's, there's some standards you can maybe look at for what that plan will include.
Yeah.
But we are looking at, on the front end-
Yes.
No, I know that.
We're doing, we're doing a review.
I, yeah.
We are doing a review.
I know that, I guess what I was, what I wanted just to bring up was, would it be more helpful to have something in writing on a plan, so then, when you go out to check, you know, and to maybe help with the conversation of how much of the site, do you have to clear the whole site?
If we, if we've got questions, that's good for this meeting. If we're getting into suggestions and changes, we probably need to get into a committee meeting-
That would.
Okay.
And get a list of the suggestions and changes that we might need to do going forward, because like that one item on the, you know, that you mentioned was brought to us when an apartment was built and everything was totally cleared, and then, built before the roads and caused a nightmare, and it was kind of a reaction to, you know, a horrible project, and a quick reaction at that before Phase Two was done.
Well, I'd love to follow up.
But we can all, but we can always get in a, you know, schedule a meeting and get into the weeds and make some changes if we need to, it'd be great.
Well, I think then, that is, that is really my last comment, just to encourage the, the two, the two where I'd love to see more demonstration sites demonstrating all of the things in our LID ordinance, and, and how can we get these great resources more integrated with our subdivision regs?
Single Tax tried to do a project like that over on Fig Avenue and had a petition with 700 people signing against doing it.
Well, that was a, that was a challenging-
We were going to have every single LID done on it, and we're going to withhold 95% of the water, we're going to withhold, it wasn't even an hour of water, and we were going to shore up a lot of erosion areas that are much worse now than they were when we were looking at it, but, you know.
But it was in a gully, so, I mean, we, okay.
That was misinformation, but-
Okay.
-it was going to protect the gully and have a walkway through the gully. But all that said, we had that opportunity, and it was kicked to the curb by the last city administration, that we would have had every single one in one beautiful spot.
Yeah.
But, anyway. Alright, are we ready for the-
Well, do you want to see the video, or can we, do you want to skip the video at this point?
Yeah, it's a new video. It's east shore specific, let's-
Okay, so, yep, so this is, this was a video that was created by the Mobile Bay NEP and Thompson Engineering when they first started the Eastern Shore Watershed Management Plan process. You'll see at the end, it says, please go here to click on a survey. That survey is closed because the plan is done. But I think that this just is like a feel-good, and why we love the bay, and why we want to protect our stormwater, so just wanted to play it for y'all.
Those of us who live, do business, or visit the eastern shore of Mobile Bay, understand this area is one of a kind. Fairhope, where artists and sunsets paint the town. Daphne, home to long-leaf pines and long views. Point Clear and Mullet Point, where life and vacations are grand. You've heard the traditions of our history-rich towns. Traditions pass from old to young, many of them focus on one thing, Mobile Bay and the legacies a healthy watershed allows.
I've lived in Daphne, Ballarat County, for almost 100 years. Being born in 1929, I have greatly enjoyed being trumped Daphne. I always said it was small, but it was the greatest.
Al, who remembers yester years like they were yesterday, recalls the adventures of growing up in Daphne.
There was a store in Daphne, Trout Store, which was significant, that sold chicken necks by the package, and you could use a chicken neck and tie a string to it on the piers and throw it over with a little weight, and crabs would come up, and when the string would become tump, you know you had a crab.
What's just as important as the history of a place is understanding how and why it's changing.
When I first came here as about a six-year-old, I did not like the water at all, because it was filled with grass beds. I didn't learn till later, when I didn't have it, how important the grass beds are. There used to be plenty of mullet, catfish, clams, crabs, trout, redfish, flounder. Growing up, that was never a problem, catching fish, and now, out here, there's no grass beds anymore, and as a result, you've seen a decline in the population of the fish and the sea creatures. I just think that we have to be careful about how we manage from hereforth. Stormwater runoff, pollution, and those kind of things all affect the welfare of the bay.
The welfare of the bay is directly tied to the welfare of the watershed. 21,000 acres historically dominated by forest and agricultural land, now equally defined by development.
I was raised in Fairhope, born and raised there. My father was a farmer, and his father before him farmed in Fairhope. Met my wife here in Daphne, Carolyn, and we moved down here about 36 years ago. You know, we're only one of two places in the world that have jubilees, and the jubilees are less frequent, they're not the fish and crabs and everything that you used to see, or what I remember seeing when I was growing up here in Small. So, I want to preserve this for future generations.
Now is the time to take economically and environmentally smart steps to preserve the eastern shore and Fly Creek watershed.
The survival of the bay, I think, is at stake, and goodness knows what an effect that would have on this area.
It is so important to, for the bountiful product of the bay, entertainment, recreation, bounty of the seafood, those things are extremely important, and I am pleased that there are activities to protect the bay in process.
And it's going to take all of us. All of us have to get together and say- All of us have to get together and save this bay.
If you live, do business, or visit the eastern shore, join us. Join the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program and Thompson Engineering by taking our survey to help us identify issues.
This was at the very beginning of the planning process.
Participate and play a part in restoring legacies, so they not only define our past, they define our future.
Hello, my name is David Green, and I have a little brother, Alexander, who is six years old, and a little sister named Andrea, who is two years old. We are the children and grandchildren that people talk about. We love our watershed. Everyone lives in a watershed. Our water is here, draining to the Mobile Bay and the Gulf of Mexico. I learned to ski, fish, and swim in this watershed. Everyone lives in a watershed. Please help clean out and keep our watershed good.
Go to mobilebay nep dot com forward slash easternshore and take our survey.
Okay, so that's the end, because there's no survey, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
So, you need a, Hunter, we need a motion to accept the stormwater management plan as presented?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the stormwater management plan as reviewed and presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Moving on, our first item, next item on the agenda is, we've got four requests from SE Spire for 1152 elevens for extending buried fiber cable.
Okay. And I'm going to flip through these, kind of at the map. At this point, I wish we had a consent agenda, because there's nothing really unique about these, they do have to be voted on individually, but what I want to show you is the areas. If you have any questions, we do have representatives from SE Spire here, so if there's any questions with them, we can answer those. In general, each of the cases has a map, so the first item is here, this is on Gal Row, Rockwell Lane. I'm just going to flip through the map and come back and give you the conditions. So, this is the standard recommendations we have for, with approval of utility reviews. We do have one item there on, that we highlighted in addition, it's the as-built we submitted to the GIS tech, so that we know where these things are in the future. Our right-of-ways are getting a little crowded, so just knowing where things are when we're planning for future projects is a great help on the front end. The second one, and I'll come back to these if you need, if you need me to, is North Hills and adjacent areas on 104. The third case, 2403, is on Twin Beach Road, and that's the high school you see, kind of down there, so Greeno and Twin Beach Road, going over to Thompson Hall, I believe?
13.
13? Yep. And then the fourth one is right there in Fairfield, if you're familiar where that is, on Booth and Twin Beach Road. All four of these have the same set of conditions, so I would ask you, if you don't have any questions, to vote on these individually with the recommendations as they are on the screen. Notify each case number as you vote. If there's any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for staff at this time? Also, we do have representatives from SE Spire here. All right? If not, UR 2401, do I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendation, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a motion for UR 2401 to approve subject to staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. UR 2402?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. UR 2403?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. UR 2404?
And to close out the board, I will make a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda, SD 2402, Old Battles Village, Phase 6.
Hey, this is the last phase of Old Battles Village, which I began, how long ago? The first Huntington Woods was the first phase? You know, that was, that was way before my time, but this is the last phase, Phase 6, 36 lot subdivision. This is the final plat. This is located, everybody knows where Old Battles Village is, but this is Garrison Boulevard, right at the end, at the property lines, there are some stub streets. It also connects to Bloomsbury through Huntington Woods that continues to Highway 98. It is a PUD, as stated, this is the final plat. The, every, and I'm going to kind of cut this short, because this was a very, when we got the application, we went out, looked, this was one of the cleanest ones, and I thought this was going to be a one-page staff report. Everything was done well, looked good, so on the final plat, really, I think what we're looking for is, did they do what we expected at preliminary plat? And, and most things were great, I'm not really going to belabor that point. Everything was done, there was kind of two punch list items, one's pretty simple, one, unfortunately, had a little bit more of a challenge, and we've got some images here. So, on the right-hand side of the screen is the construction documents that we approved in preliminary plat and with the permit. It shows the existing road and sidewalks for connectivity purposes extending to the north property line. I want to refresh your memory on a informal review we had, I believe Jason Tickle was in, talking about a development along Twin Beach. For purposes of that conversation, this is the road that we were talking about, the connection where that would come into. So, on our inspections, we did notice kind of some stakes on the, when you all walk out, it looks like the sidewalks, you know, road and barricades are right at the end of the road, but we saw some stakes, there were some questions, there's a street light a little further in. We asked for some confirmation, the clearing and grubbing plans clearly shows all that going to the edge of the property line. Well, we, I'm going to skip forward real quick, we got the as-built and the road, the barricades, and the sidewalks are 17 feet short of the property line. There was, there is a 27-inch water oak in the way, and we'll go back to the photo you see, highlighted by the red, the blue arrow. There is a tree in the way of stopping that. That tree was not shown on the original tree survey. Have said, there was an old survey, granted, this is a, like I said, this is a very old project, and some of those first phases had a tree survey, it wasn't updated, so the statement was, that wasn't a heritage tree when the PUD was approved. We have a tree there, the road is to extend, and while we certainly preserve, want to preserve all trees, we also want to acknowledge that connectivity is an issue as well. If at preliminary plat, we would have known this, we could have looked at different designs, but this, this PUD was pretty much approved 10 years ago, the road was right where it is, so what do we do there is just kind of the question, with it not being on the preliminary plat. So, we wanted to leave some leeway, but also provide a potential solution. What I think staff level, we would have to deal with is, if these houses get built, people move in, and then there is a development next door, then they have to come onto their property and continue the road, take a tree down that may be even bigger then. We do feel like the connectivity is warranted, it's a water oak. I believe there were 78 trees installed in this subdivision, and three or four removed to make the roads happen in this phase of the subdivision. This is a final plat, so there's some follow-up activities that are in our subdivision regulations, but just like to remind people that we have to have a recorded plat within 120 days of acceptance, copy of recorded O&amp;M agreement, and the maintenance and guarantee agreements executed by the developer, that will eventually be signed once it gets through council by the mayor, and will run for two years. There's some notes there on the 30 days in Paragraph 3, and to include the insert number from the recorded plat. We do recommend conditional approval of Old Battles Village, Phase 6 final plat, subject to the following conditions. So, a resolution to this heritage tree conflict, we make a suggestion of remove the tree and extend the road and sidewalks to the north property line, move the barricade and signage accordingly, and submit revised landscape plans to determine if additional tree credits are needed. That's the landscape architect's kind of job, to look at the, what's being removed and what's being planted, and come up with the credits. Number two, completion of the follow-up activities, and number three, replacement of the side mulch panel per the right-of-way inspector's letter. We would expect those to be done, if approved that way, before we sign the final plat. If there is any questions, we do have representatives from 68 Ventures, Dewberry... Anybody else? ...here, if y'all have any questions for them.
I think a good resolution would just be to follow what you say, and just let them put a live oak tree on either side of the road there. You know, if that tree's become a heritage tree and a water oak, it's probably going to snap in the next few years anyway, and those live oaks will be there for 200 years. Just an idea.
Adding two additional trees?
Yeah, just add, just add an additional tree on each side, right about where those are, you know, and then in 20 years, you'll have a pretty big tree where that water oak would have been snapped anyway.
Yeah, and live oaks, not, you know, crape myrtles, but...
Yeah, not, not crape myrtles, or, you know, some, something like a...
Overstory.
You know, nothing like those, you know, like a popcorn tree, or a crape myrtle, or a Bradford pear that's going to be there for 20 years and then die, you know, like...
Street tree to match the street trees that are already planted.
No, just put a live oak on each side. Yeah, overstory. I mean, I don't know what matches, they may have crape myrtles throughout there, I just think, put a live oak on either side, you've got a water oak going down.
Yeah.
They're not crape myrtles that are out there, I know there's some type of, I believe there's some type of oak that's out there. I don't know if it's a live oak or a, I know it's not a water oak, but it could be a willow oak.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'd love to just require live oaks.
Two live oaks in the area.
It wouldn't have to match everything.
And I think that, just make sure, I'd like to ask Dewberry if there's any conflicts, I know there's some fraying swells or something.
Potentially eight feet from the property line, to where the future of the tree grows, the roots aren't where the road's going to be connecting.
Sure.
Just as a...
Hunter, can you drop that picture back to where it shows the as-built and how short it is, how far off the line it is?
17 feet.
And the sidewalks are shown here as installed, but they're actually stopped at 17 feet as well. There's the, there's the aerial, there's the tree, you see in the picture? Right, go back to that other one if you would, please. The hatch lines we're seeing, does it, does it denote where the actual lot lines are? The only question I have on the live oaks on the backside, is it going to... We should be fine. We should be okay? Yeah, these are the lot lines, I believe, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, these are the lot lines.
Those are the lot lines.
You don't see the one on the east. So...
There's a common area on that northern strip, so the property line actually starts right close to where...
The remainder of the street trees are sitting in that same space as you move south. Yeah, just thinking of construction, it may be something to note that we, they would need to be required to put the driveways on the south side of the lot line, and not get up there and try to do a side drive on the north side where we're putting two oak trees? There is, um... Does that make sense? It is only on the east side, there is a drainage, so I wouldn't worry about it there, but potentially here. Yeah, that's the only thing, if they build a house on 279, and they've got a, you know, side yard driveway that's coming in, it's got to be three feet off the property line, you make a curb cut, you may have a tree right there in the middle of the way. If you, if on that house design, they know ahead of time, make sure if you're going to do a side entry, the driveway needs to be on the south side, so that it doesn't conflict with where we're planting a tree, something like that. And that can be just a heads up. We can certainly work with them on that on the plat, if, we'll see if we see... And that'd be the only one that probably would, but I've seen, we've seen that happen before. Okay. Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Hunter? Did I? All right. Does the developer have anything to add at this time? If not, I'll open the public hearing, and then, see if y'all have any questions to answer, is that all right?
I do not.
Oh, you're, okay, I was looking at it the wrong way, I'm sorry. Okay, cool. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is Old Battles Village, Phase 6. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this issue? All right, in that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions for the developer representative who was here? No questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SD 2402, Old Battles, Phase 6, subject to staff recommendations.
Ms. Cortez?
Yeah, we said add two trees, and then the, the driveway...
Was that, okay.
We just made a suggestion, so if you wouldn't mind...
You didn't put, okay, I thought that was in the, in the other...
Is there computer screens up?
Yes. Yeah, okay.
So, you can, use that headline as a suggestion, and add if you want the two trees.
So, subject to staff recommendations with the added suggestion, removing the tree, extending the road and sidewalks to the north property, as worded, moving barricades and submit the landscape plan.
Adding two trees.
And two waters.
Okay.
And your driveway suggestion.
I don't know that I want to put the dri, I don't think...
We can handle that initially.
It's not necessary to put the driveway, I'm just giving the developer a heads up, so that they can be thinking about that as they're doing it.
But adding with two live oaks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And specify, staff suggestion, remove tree, extend road and sidewalks to the north property line, move the barricades and signage, require two live oaks on either side with the removal of the water oak necessary to extend the road. Completion of follow-up activities and the replacement of any remaining sidewalk panels from the right-of-way inspectors. And I drove it today, and there's quite a few that have been replaced, so I don't know how many they have left, but it can't be much.
I'm sorry, just to clarify...
Sir.
One live oak on each side?
That's what we said, one on either side.
I thought you said two on each side, just wanted to clarify.
Well, yes. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, last item on the agenda, SD 24.03, public hearing to request SE Civil for the flats, oh, excuse me, Waters at East Bay, for final plat approval of the flats at East Bay LLC, 240-unit multiple occupancy project.
Good evening, Mike Jeffries with the City of Fairhope. As you said, this is the applicant SE Civil on behalf of the Waters at East Bay. This is a 240-unit multiple occupancy project, this is for final approval. Property is about, little over 20 acres, located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Twin Beach Road and Thompson Hall Road. The property is currently zoned RMF 6 by Baldwin County. The preliminary approval was granted March 1st of 2021. They did receive a one-year extension and are here tonight for the final approval. On the screen, on the left side, you can see our zoning map. On the right side is the little outdated aerial. Currently, the site has multiple buildings that are, have been erected, and the road network going around. On the screen is a colored phased plan, and you'll see in the next slides, and you saw in the staff report, as part of this project of phasing the vertical construction to include inspections of the asphalt road as it goes around. And we can go back to that site plan at any point in time. In general, the major infrastructure has been installed and completed, except for the access drive that goes around the development as part of that phasing, construction fixing will be relocated per the phasing plan. The construction entrance, located on the east side, will be open and dedicated only for construction traffic, with the west side main entrance open only to the residents. The completion of the 11th and final phase of construction, that construction entrance would be removed and replaced with the approved landscaping. Some additional comments, kind of from the, the conditions of approval from the preliminary were, the traffic, the traffic improvements that were required at Twin Beach per ALDOX project at 44 and Highway 98 have been completed, as long, as well as the roundabout at 44 and 13. Water and sewer and access drive to the buildings inside the development will remain private and not the responsibility of Fairhope to remain. Landscaping's been installed according to the landscape plan. There are some additional trees that were originally saved, that were after the construction determined by our horticulturist to be in poor health. The applicant has agreed to additional tree plantings to mitigate the removal of these couple trees, and I have a slide where we can see with those trees where they are. Baldwin County holds the permit for work that was done in the right-of-way. They had two inspection items, and that'll be completed and approved by Baldwin County. They're very minimal to some of the turn lanes that were done out there. We do have bonds and schedule of values that have provided and are under review. We do have bonds and schedule of values that have provided and are under review. So the trees that have marked, and we have some mitigation for, we do the right-hand of the screen, close to the final phase 11, there's a row of kind of some trees that are kind of on the prop, close to the property line, and once some of that underbrushed was cleared out, one of the trees that they really couldn't get to to see, it is in bad condition, it is dead. There were some other trees that they were wanting to remove just as kind of a convenience. We looked at them, they were not in poor health, they were healthy, vibrant trees, but we did agree that there is one tree that really could cause some danger and harm to either the neighboring residents or people moving into the community. The phase five portion down on the southwest corner of the property, there were two trees there that are showing signs of poor health, and to mitigate the removal of those two trees is where they've agreed to plant some new trees approximately in that area highlighted in green. I believe those were going to be maybe some magnolia-type trees to help accent the area, that common area that's down there for the guest. The same follow-up activities as required for all final, final plats and final MOP plans. Staff's recommendation is approved with the following conditions, that a letter confirming all onsite sewer, water, and drives are to remain privately maintained and is not the responsibility of the City of Fairhope or Baldwin County, signed by the developer and owner. Staff approval at the end of each phase prior to issuance of any building certificate of occupancy in the phase, including but limited to the completion, but not limited to the completion of the asphalt. Three is the landscape mitigation and planting is completed and approved by the horticulturist supervisor as part of the phase five inspection, and then that a complete as-built set shall be provided as part of the closeout of the final phase, just so we can capture any minor modifications to any road tweaks or something that may, so we have a complete as-built set. And we have the developers and representatives here tonight that can answer any questions, and I can answer any question that you may have behalf of staff.
One question. Why is this coming for the final plat approval prior to that road being done around the outside?
So that's with the vertical construction still, it's underway currently, so if they completed that road, the road is going to be tore up. The drainage, the curbing, that, some of that work has been done, so we're capturing the stormwater runoff, and then to allow the construction to continue without any having to come back and repave it, and we're not issuing COs on those buildings until we get that completion level done. So if they didn't start vertical construction, they could have went in and put in the sewer, the drainage and everything, and had that development, and then came in as a phased vertical construction of each one of these buildings as well. And that was their, their request to us, and we felt with the phase development, as long as we have the construction fencing, that it's clearly delineating which areas are open to the public, which is not, and they have sent that to us, and that's what's been seen, seen tonight.
And the, the major, all the stormwater pond, all that stable, it is something we probably need to look at, and Eric and I have debated some times of, in these MOPs, you know, just not allowing vertical construction until all of the things are done, but, you know, sometimes that can be problematic for construction, and things do get torn up. So it's something we probably need to look at as we move into code revisions after the comp plan. Do we have better options that can coordinate better with the construction fencing?
I just had a quick comment. You know, we, we had with, just about one aspect of this project that I thought was positive. We have other applicants asking, what do we mean with, with integrating the green space and integrating the stormwater? And just walking around and seeing, you drive up to the back of these apartments, you can come in that way, or you go to the front and there's a sidewalk going around the stormwater pond, it's got a dock, there's a porch overlooking it. The, the stormwater and the landscape feel really integrated.
They, they work well together on this project. You know, it's a, you know, the classic of, is it, is it landscaping and is it an amenity? Are we using this pond? Or is this pond a hole in the back of the property that all we're doing is capturing the water and it's just a retention area?
Yeah.
Got, that needs to be fenced and screened where nobody can see it, or is it something we want to bring the community, the people together of a neighborhood, a complex, depending on what that development is, and, and this one did a great job with it.
All right. Any more questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you, sir. Do y'all have anything to add at this time? In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the apartment that's going to be built out on Twin Beach Road, just to the east of the roundabout that's brand new. Any questions or comments from the public? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. All right, if there are no more questions or concerns, I'll accept a motion.
After the last one, I'm not going again.
I'll make a motion to approve SD 24.03.
Subject to staff recommendations. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a, to, in a second, to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn before Chris speaks, please?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, and he was joking. Pursuant to Alabama law, it is my recommendation that the Planning Commission go into executive session, prepare a declaration and opinion to that effect pursuant to Alabama Code, Section 36 dash 25A dash seven, to discuss pending and/or potential litigation. I do not foresee any action that will be needed to be taken after that, but I do suggest that the Planning Commission go into the executive session and request that the Planning Commission make a motion and vote on that, as I said, to discuss pending or potential litigation.
I move we go into executive session?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
About, how long do you think this will take?
Depends on y'all. I think it'll be brief though, 15 minutes.
All right, all right. The reason I ask that is for folks, in case anybody wants, sometimes people like to wait until we're done, but I don't expect anything when we come out other than just a motion to adjourn, but, but should be in the 15-minute range. All in favor to go into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Nay.
I'm at 6:15. Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
May it so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion to adjourn in five minutes? No, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Finally.
Thank you all.